If everybody's ready, the hour is 7:02 probably. And so I am calling this April 11th meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise. And trustee Clark, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Present.
Trustee DeCostela.
Present.
Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Supervisor Wilt.
Present. And the record will reflect that our clerk is also present. And by the way, the stationery now has all the names, so.
Excellent.
All right. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the January 10th board meeting. We've passed on these a few times. Those who were present were trustee Carroll, Clark, Heilenbach, and supervisor Wilt. And so we should have no problem. So I will, what is your pleasure? We'll ask, what is your pleasure on the minutes of January 10th, 2023?
I make a motion we approve the minutes of January 10th, 2023.
I will second that.
I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of January 10th, 2023. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Supervisor Wilt, I need to abstain.
Thank you. We have one abstention.
Abstain.
And two abstentions, but we have one, and I vote aye, so we have three voting in favor. The next set of minutes is from Tuesday, February 14th. Present at that meeting were supervisor Wilt, trustee Clark, and trustee Heilenbach. That is all that was here. And even though, I believe these, were these minutes taken by you, trustee Clark, or were these done by the, now, these were, these were already, in February, that was already Clerk Reyes. So we have three people who can vote. So what is your pleasure?
Make a motion we approve the minutes of February 14th, 2023.
I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach. Do I hear a second? I will second that. The minutes of February 14th, are there any additions or corrections? We have a motion and second to approve them.
I have a correction. On the first page, under roll call, my name is spelled wrong.
There's an E on the end of that.
Should be an E on the end of Clark.
Okay, and February 14th. Are there any other corrections? Got it right in the rest of it. Hearing nothing else, we have a motion and a second to approve these minutes, I believe. Yes? Yes, okay. So all in favor say aye.
We need a motion.
Pardon?
We need a motion.
No, no, we're just on the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on the February 14th, so we do have a motion on those, correct? Yes. Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. All opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, we have three votes in favor, so that I will declare those approved.
Next are the minutes of March 7th, the committee of the whole. Present were trustee Carroll, Clark, Heilenbach, and supervisor Wilt. What is your pleasure with these minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of.
March 7th.
Meeting of March 7th.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Carroll. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Heilenbach seconds. Any discussion, any additions or corrections to these minutes? Hearing none? All in favor of approving these minutes, say aye.
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 Supervisor Wilt, I abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, I have two abstentions. Trustee Heilenbach, did you vote aye?
Yes.
Okay, then we have, we have a majority, all, so I will call the vote as approved on the March 7th minutes. March 9th, present were supervisor Wilt, trustee Clark, Heilenbach, and Carroll. What is your pleasure with the minutes of this special meeting on March 9th?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of March 9th.
I have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for March 9th by trustee Carroll. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections? Same thing.
Once again, my name is spelled wrong under the present. You must copy and paste.
Okay.
Spelled right every other one, just that first page.
Okay, that will, those will stand corrected. Any other additions or corrections? Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Thank you. I have four ayes and one abstention, so I will call those approved, March 9th minutes. And finally, we have the minutes of the March 14th Board of Trustees' meeting. And present there were supervisor Wilt, trustee Clark, trustee Carroll. And by the end of the meeting, we actually also had trustee DeCostela. So we should, that would be a notation, well, okay. So what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting, the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, March 14th.
I will second that. So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 14th. I see that in the present category, once again, we have that correction of adding an E to trustee Clark's name. Are there any other additions or corrections? And on this one, I would say, since by the end of the meeting you were in office, trustee DeCostela can also vote. Any, any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Aye.
Abstain.
And one abstention. Thank you, motion is carried. We finally have all our minutes approved. Thank you. All righty. Next item is new business. I believe I'm, do I need to suspend this meeting and then call a special?
It's just a vote to recess the regular meeting.
Okay.
Going to the.
Okay. So we have the issue of a bond, a Bena Public Hearing Bond Issue Notification Act public hearing. So may I have a motion to, I'm sorry, what was it, the recess? Recession? A motion to recess this meeting so that we can call that meeting?
So moved.
I have a motion to recess by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Carroll. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, so we will go into recess, and I will call the public hearing open for the Bond Issue Notification Act. And this is regarding the general obligation bonds not to exceed $500,000. The ultimate revenue source being the levying of a special levy for a period of five years. And we have, we have the ordinance and the invitation for the filing of petitions, if anybody so wishes, that have been posted. So this is the opportunity for the public to ask any questions regarding this potential ordinance that will be acted upon unless, unless objected to next month and at the May meeting. So are there any questions from the board? Anything that's still unclear perhaps, or anybody in the audience? Nothing? If there is nothing else, then I will ask for an adjournment of this hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn this hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion by trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee DeCostela, to adjourn the public hearing.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, and we will now reopen our regular meeting of this board. Matt DeCostela. Mary Rehm. So I will reopen the meeting of the Board of Trustees. And the next item on the agenda is the special event request for April 29th, which is for a baby shower. Information is in your book, they're asking for room 30. They are asking for our approval because they plan to serve alcohol, and they will provide, this would be subject, of course, to their providing the necessary insurance. Rental fees are listed there. What is your pleasure?
I make a move that we approve the special event request for April 29th.
I have a mo, thank you. I have a motion by trustee Clark to approve the special event request for April 29th. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Carroll. Any discussion? Hearing none? We should do this by roll call vote. So clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you, that will be approved, subject to the usual requirements. The next order of business is the supervisors' report. I just gave you one for the whole year. I don't really have much to add, other than, yes, the, the bridge is underway. We have been receiving more of the tax revenue since the beginning of this fiscal year. So we've received an additional, from what you have in your reports, we've received about $190,000 between the real estate taxes and the personal property replacement tax. So we are, once again, a little bit more comfortable. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have, but I don't really have anything. Any questions?
Supervisor Wilt, do we know when the bridge is anticipated to be completed?
So we've been told roughly eight weeks. They have been working on days that where weather permits. There were a couple of very windy days when nobody showed up, wasn't expecting them to. But it looks like progress is going pretty well.
They've made great progress.
Mm-hmm.
Looks great.
At least, yeah, they've been doing mostly the sand blasting, and it appears that there's been some priming on the, on the south end of the bridge. And that's, that's all we can ask, that it keep progressing well. Any other questions? All right then. We will move right along to the next item of business, trustee reports. Trustee Clark, do you have anything for us?
Just exercise class is continuing to go well. Lobby day is April 26th, and I'll be attending a director's meeting in Springfield on April 19th.
Okay, thank you. Trustee DeCostela, do you have anything for us?
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Carroll.
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you. And trustee Heilenbach.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Mental Health Board, the C I T training that was done for 17 of our local first responders was completed approximately two weeks ago with very good results. This means that most of our first responders, as far as the police department is concerned, are trained in C I T training provided by the Riverside Township Mental Health Board. The other thing is, is that our C I T Community Resource Center, we're working on the hours to make it more manageable for, for our residents. You know, we had Saturday hours, thinking that Saturday would be a good time, and we just didn't have, we have nobody. So we're going to tweak those hours a little bit. We, as Adam mentioned in our, in our town meeting, we're going to be paying some grant money in the first quarter of this for the last quarter of 2023. We do have the financial resources now, so we should be up to date and caught up, and hopefully this won't happen again. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to any of those reports? Here, yes.
Yes, it is, at the very bottom.
Are there any communications? Thank you.
It looks like we have three communications.
All right.
We have a thank you from the representatives of Beds Plus. We have a thank you from the Aging Care Connections Group. Actually, we have two thank yous from.
Because we had, we are sponsors of Aging Well Month, as well as they got a grant.
Correct.
So there's one for each.
Yep, Aging Well Month and Aging Care Connections, right. They're thanking us for the $5,000 grant and the $1,500. And the last thing is the Best Buddies update from Adam Wilt.
Very good, thank you. No action needs to be taken on that, so thank you for the communications. Unfinished business, swinging bridge repairs. I can officially report here that we were unable, or we anticipate being denied, grant by Cook County because we are too far along in the project, and they feel that it will be completed by the time they would be funding, and they won't pay retroactively. So even though they haven't come to their decisions yet, we were pretty much told on our interview that that won't happen. Other than that, as I already announced, the bridge progress, you know, it's looking better all the time. It's been closed since the last week in March before, we started, the weekend before, it was already closed off, and they were starting to set up things, so, like their dumpster and so forth. And other than that, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer, but that's all I know right now.
Are we going to put a sign up saying that there's repairs, you know, being done?
Well, we, we put that the bridge was closed. We have not put up a sign because last time we did a sign like that when we needed it, it was pretty well torn up very quickly in the wind. This being spring, I don't know. I mean, we could build something structurally, but perhaps something.
I think people can see that the bridge is being repaired.
I, I think so, but I think that the question is, are we going to show that it's Riverside Township work in progress? What is your pleasure on that? We can investigate, you know, I was waiting for some shirts. We all stand there and advertise it. It, it did go into our newsletter, which you should have all gotten by now. We had in Facebook, it's been on our website. If you, if you would like me to obtain a sign to indicate, I'll probably have to get permission from the village to do so, but we could post something as well that indicates it's, it's the work of the township.
How do people feel about that?
It was in the newsletter. I mean, supervisor Wilt is right, with the wind, it'll blow that thing all over the place.
All right, well, let's not do it. Are we going to have a ribbon?
I think that once it's finished, yes, I think it would be nice for us to have a ribbon cutting then and have a nice.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Were you going to have fireworks?
No, because clerk drop goes no longer.
It's not here. I was just thinking that same thing.
Our pyromaniac is no longer on this board.
Big party fan.
All right, that, so we will, we'll do some kind of a ribbon cutting and get, get a little fanfare at that time. Okay, next, these items are simply for information. Call attention to the fact that we have our shred-a-thon on Earth Day, April 22nd, when everything on earth seems to be scheduled. That's why it's Earth Day, because there are so many functions that day. That will take place from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Riverside Masonic Lodge parking lot, where we've had it at 40 Forest Avenue, where we've had it for the last couple of years. And we ask that only Riverside Township residents come out, and you have a limit of three boxes of paper, and documents will be shredded on site by American Mobile Shredding and Recycling. We invite folks to also bring out a non-perishable, unexpired food item to donate to the Riverside Township Food Pantry in return for the service. And we don't turn anyone away if they don't bring it, but it would be nice. Any questions about that? The Township 2024 Fiscal Year Budget is available for viewing at the Township Office, and we will act upon that on, at the next meeting on May 9th, and we will have a hearing at 6:45 p.m. preceding our next meeting for that. It is post, it will be posted in all the right places. And we just call your attention to that. The North Riverside Senior Fair takes place on Thursday, May 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and we will be participating there, as will be, as will the Community Resource Center. So come on out and see us, and it's only a two-hour event, but we will be participating. Is there any other informative stuff that anybody needs to bring up? If not, then our next act would be to recess to close session, to review salaries for township employees.
So moved.
I have a motion to go into closed session. Do I hear a second? Motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Carroll, to go into closed session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Ooh, so I need a recorder.
And a motion to approve the recommendations. So moved.
I have a second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the salary recommendations from our closed session. Any discussion? Then please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Okay, motion is carried. Onto approval of the warrants.
I'd like to make a motion that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, April 2023, in the amount of $12,929.46, as presented to the board 11th day of April 2023.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by trustee DeCostela, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the general warrants in the amount of $12,929.46. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, April 2023, in the amount of $1,425.8. Payroll warrant, April 2023, the amount of $20,009.48. Health warrant, April 2023, in the amount of $5,710.93. Grants, April 2023, in the amount of $9,950. Petty cash, April 2023, in the amount of $185.47. General assistance warrant, April 2023, in the amount of $13,759.89. Township radio players warrant, April 2023, in the amount of $200. Food pantry warrant, April 2023, in the amount of $696.9. All of the above as presented to the board this 11th day of April 2023.
Thank you. I have a motion by trustee DeCostela. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Clark for the following motion, to approve the following warrants. Utility warrant for April 2023 of $1,425.8. Payroll warrant for the same period, $20,009.48. Health warrant in the amount of $5,710.93. Grants in the amount of $9,950. Petty cash in the amount of $185.47. General assistance in the amount of $13,759.89. Radio township, township radio players in the amount of $200. Food pantry warrant in the amount of $696.9. Any questions? Any discussion? I have a motion and a second to approve these warrants. Please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach, yes. Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Matt, you want to pass that? Thank you. That motion is carried, and, and there, are there any public comments?
Yes, I have some public comments, thank you. My name is Fran Sidkowitz, I'm the Riverside Township Assessor, and I'm here to let our taxpayers know that the appeal session and the reassessment has begun for the 2023 property tax year. Taxpayers have until May 1st to file an appeal with the Cook County Assessor, and later in the year, they will be able to appeal again with the board of review. We are, we do have a, an outreach with the Cook County Assessor's Office, scheduled for Monday, April 17th, here in the second floor. We will have representatives from the Cook County Assessor's Office here to entertain questions and help us figure out what happened during this reassessment, and why, and how taxpayers can go about appealing their, their assessments. It's been very busy upstairs. On Monday, we came back to 60 voice messages and about 100 email messages. So, so, and, and it hasn't stopped. It hasn't slowed down since then. So we're trying our best to get as many people scheduled who want, who want an appointment, and we have a number of people who just email us and just request for comparables and step-by-step directions. So we're getting those out as quickly as we can, we're working as fast as we can, we're just asking everyone to be patient, but we promise everyone who wants to make an appeal, and if they need some assistance, we're here to help. And that's what's been going on at the Assessor's Office.
Thank you very much, and sorry to make you wait through all, all this.
Fran, what time on Monday?
Six o'clock.
So 6:00 p.m. Monday, April 17th.
Yes.
In the auditorium of the Town Hall.
Great.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I hear stereo, trustee Heilenbach and trustee DeCostela. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, and meeting is adjourned.